Okay, Ms. McGrew normally does our public service announcements, but her voice is a little weakened tonight, so she asked me to do that, so I'm going to read our announcements for a lot of what's going on around our city. On November the 24th, Love Lights Tree presented by the Cherokee County Chapter of the American Cancer Society is from 5:30 to 7:00 PM in Cannon Park. Entertainment, light refreshments and lighting of the community Christmas tree. Ornaments can be purchased in memory of or in honor of loved ones with cancer. Santa Claus will also be in the gazebo, so bring your kids and grandkids. December the 2nd, Run for the Children Reindeer Run 5K, 8:00 AM at Etowah River Park, presented by the Service League of Cherokee County. Also on December the 2nd, Canton Christmas Concert and Parade in Downtown Canton, presented by the Canton Optimist Club. Entertainment begins at 12 o'clock and the parade begins at 6:00 PM. December the 8th and 9th, Third Annual Art and Wine Walk in Historic Downtown Canton, presented by Canton Main Street, Friday, December the 8th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM and Saturday, December the 9th from 2:00 to 6:00. And on December the 9th, Police in the Park 5K, 9:00 AM at the Etowah River Park, presented by the Canton Police Department. The Cherokee County Historical Society Museum continuing with their ongoing mapping of Cherokee, featuring the 20th Century Map and Photo Collection by Lat Ridgway, an old-time surveyor here in Cherokee County. Cherokee County Arts Center, ongoing through December the 16th, is Holiday Members Show and Sale. It's a good place to go in and buy some gifts. It really is a holiday show and sale there at the Arts Center. And as well during that time, they'll have the Cherokee Photography Club Show. Canton Theater, November the 18th, Stone Cold Country Reunion Show, December the 3rd, the movie Polar Express, and December the 10th, the movie White Christmas. So, got a lot of activities going on, a lot of fun things for folks to do. Like to welcome all of our guest investors here tonight. We have a proclamation that I will actually read a portion of here. It's the General Aviation Appreciation Month for 2017. I mean, we have a lot of resolutions that are requested, and this one was as well. Whereas the City of Canton is in the state of Georgia, has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. Whereas general aviation and the Cherokee County Regional Airport have an immense economic impact on the city of Canton. And whereas Georgia is a home to 95 public use airports, which serve 17,913 pilots and 5,659 active general aviation aircraft. And whereas Georgia is a home to 150 fixed base operators, 125 repair stations, 119 heliports, 13 FAA-approved pilot schools, 3,048 flight students, and 3,345 flight instructors. And whereas general aviation in Georgia contributes over $1.2 billion. And whereas general aviation not only supports Georgia's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and also by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place of this system to ensure that it remains a public system and serves communities of all sizes. Now therefore, I敬Hogged, Mayor of the City of Canton, to hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of Canton, and declare November as General Aviation Appreciation Month in the city of Canton. We have a presentation here from a signature athletic event for Canton, Mr. Randy Tuto. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, good. With Due North Sports Partners. Welcome.
Yes, sir. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Council. I appreciate you all having me. As I noted, my name is Randy Tuto. I'm the Vice President of Strategy and Development for Due North Sports Partners. We are an economic development firm that uses sports tourism to drive local economies. I'm here, I met Lane Wood with the Canton Tourism, Inc., during, after a presentation that I did for the North Georgia Mountains Travel Association on sports tourism while I was up at Marketing College last May. And from there, we engaged in some discussions, and then she had me come over to Canton about a month and a half ago, and I met with Canton Tourism, Inc. to talk a little bit about sports tourism and helping out, starting an initiative. So to give you a little bit of background, what is sports tourism? It is any person who travels for the purpose of participating in or watching an event. Now, why is sports tourism important? Well, according to the National Association of Sports Commissions, the economic benefit of sports tourism in 2016 was $10.47 billion. And that was, it's seen 23% growth over the last 20 years. It's absolutely amazing, and it's also bulletproof in the sense that people will travel for tournaments, they'll travel for competitions and national championships when they have to cancel the vacation. So in economic downturns, it's a really good way of helping to drive the economy. I did have a presentation, unfortunately it's not going to work for us today, so I'm just going to give you the highlights and hopefully charm you with some decent words. But according to Kevin Langston, who's the Commissioner, the Deputy Commissioner of Tourism for the Georgia Department of Economic Development, sports and outdoor recreation are going to be a major thrust into 2018 for Georgia tourism efforts and marketing. And we are an organization that can help companies, or basically help municipalities, develop sports tourism programs for that purpose. How we can help, we can come into a community, we can do an assessment of all your venues, facilities, green spaces, and trails. We interview local stakeholders and then take surveys to get a general pulse of the community, to get their feelings about what they think may work in the community, and then also by looking at all the facilities that you have, we can decide on events that might work out for you. We can actually take that a little step further, and also do strategic planning for you as well, where we actually have to identify a good strategy for driving tourists, and then also identify the stakeholders who can help our mission basically get completed. Beyond that, we also do event recruitment. I've been working in the sports industry for about 25 years now, and through our industry contacts, we're able to, you know, contact various organizations who are looking for venues for their sports, and believe it or not, a lot of folks are looking out. And then also, we go beyond that with event developments. To give you a little bit about my background, I'm a former Convention and Visitors Bureau Director. I was the Development Director for the Augusta Sports Council. I was a former General Manager of the Olympic Shooting Complex, and some of the events that I recruited, in particular for the City of Augusta, include Ironman 70.3 Augusta, which for a number of years was the largest Ironman event in the world, four USA Cycling National Road Championships, AAU Cross-Country National Championships, the US Adventure Race National Championships. And so, I have a great list of contacts of people that I can draw from who are looking for venues, and will allow me to basically work as their proxy to try to put these events into communities. And so, what we are looking for is an opportunity to partner with Canton, to collaborate, to develop a sports tourism initiative. And, you know, part of that could be recruitment, but really, as it mentions up there with the signature event, we would really like to come in, do an assessment, develop a strategic plan, and then help develop an event that will drive tourism. We can go after any number of events, but the reality is that we need to go after something that is sustainable, something that makes sense for the community, and something that is going to be long-term. And so, I've got a lot of information that I've provided for you all. So can I answer any questions for you at all? Yes, sir.
Have you ever worked with a company called Lakeland Tours out of Charlottesville, Virginia?
No, sir, I haven't.
They typically will fly groups of people around for events, like what you're describing. But you're typically trying to bring people to the event.
Correct.
Not a group of people to an event.
Right.
Unless you've got a whole school that would come. For instance, one of the things they do is band competitions, where they'll bring the whole band in. So if we had an event that brought a lot of groups together, you might work with somebody like that to fly them all in, because that's what they do.
Absolutely. In fact, marching band competitions are a great driver. And they're also in the line of what I would consider non-traditional sports, you know, because as much as I've worked with Little League Baseball and basketball and endurance events like the Ironman or USA Cycling Events, marching band competitions. I hosted a southeastern bridge competition that had over 1,000 people. And, you know, it's not considered a sport, but in my mind, it is considered a sport. And so, any type of event that we can attract, that will put people in the hotel rooms, put them in your restaurants, and then also put them, you know, buying, you know, basically through retail activity.
What would you suggest for us?
Well, that's part of the assessment and the strategic plan, but the thing that really interests me, when I visited the last time, the Etowah River is significant, and I know that you have a new landing out there, and I think that you have a lot of potential for a signature event utilizing the river. In Columbia County, one of the events that I supported was an event called Bender Dinker, which was a paddle and food festival that annually brings over 1,000 people to the community. And, you know, the way I approached the events in Columbia County was, A, I wanted the people to come into the community because I wanted them to leave behind revenue, but at the same time, I wanted to find events that could really promote the assets that we have. And, you know, again, using Columbia County, I had the Savannah River, the Augusta Canal, Clarksville Lake, a state park, and a county park. And when I was able to put events in those parks, they drew a lot of, you know, they drew a lot of attention. And so, that's one of the areas that I'm looking at. And with a specialty in non-traditional sports, I don't have to be bound by a traditional venue, so you're welcome.
Mr. Grant?
Thanks.
Yes, when did you do the Columbia County event?
Well, I did them over the last four years. I started working, I was the CVB Director from 2012 until the end of last year, 2016.
And as Due North, what can you name a recent project or where you did a similar strategic assessment for?
Yeah, I just, I did a presentation for Raven County, and I believe that was last week.
Okay.
You know, but I was, again, I was with the Columbia County Convention and Visitors Bureau from 2012 to 2016, the Augusta Sports Council prior to that, and my relationship with the Sports Council extends back to 1992, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. How much is the staff, city staff involved?
That's a good question, and again, you know, I don't want to be flip about it, but it's going to require the assessment and the strategic plan, you know, before we can actually identify events. And then, we don't arbitrarily just go after events and then just make it fit with the community. It has to be done in collaboration with the community, because a lot of times with the events that I've done in the past, particularly in an event like Ironman, we had 12 different agencies that had to sign off on it, you know, we utilized a lot of staff.
Just the staff getting in touch with all those agencies and do that collaboration, or I see you, or maybe at some point, you do a community assessment, strategic plan, you do marketing.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, whenever you determine, I don't know if you have, if you do it for the city, and with the city's down, and that get on here, say, and bring it all together, how much hands-on are you doing by the actual?
Personally, I'll probably be the first one on site and the last one to leave. You know, it really depends, because, you know, using the examples of my past, you know, events like the Augusta Half Ironman, you know, we had the City of Augusta, we had Aiken, South Carolina, we had a number of different groups in, and I basically had to be the chief traffic cop for all of that. Whereas other events, like the Wildwood Games, which I created in Columbia County, which we ran for three years, it was a multi-sport festival, and we were completely contained. We utilized a little bit of Parks and Recreation staff to help us out, but primarily, we drove the entire process from event staff into volunteers.
One more question. If your proposal, if we decided we just wanted you to do the Augusta Sports, would you be able to just say that?
No, absolutely. If that's the nature of the relationship, then absolutely. You know, we just, we like to make sure that we put out some options for you. But, you know, with the assessment and the strategic plan, you're going to really have a good idea of what your inventory is, and we can lay out the metrics for our success for the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? I assume that this would be a professional service? Billy, would that be a professional? It would be?
It would be, and it likely would be something that we would run through Canton Tourism. And so, Tourism has heard from the group, and so I think they wanted the opportunity for the group to come and talk to you, just so if we want to have that conversation with Tourism, we would do a budget amendment for Tourism, using the hotel tax to provide for that service, if that's what Council wished to do.
Okay. So we need to, between now and, this will be taken to the Tourism again, or have they already discussed this at all?
Tourism's discussed it. I think, I think we got a figure.
They're recommending this, I see.
Yes, they're recommending it if it's the direction the Council wants to go.
Okay.
So what we could do, if you would like, is we could put this on the agenda in December for discussion.
At the first meeting, and then action at second.
Ms. Woods here from Tourism, so she might be able to speak about it.
Go ahead.
Come up here. Lane, come to the microphone, please.
I'm Lane Wood with Canton Tourism, and I invited Randy here to speak. And what, I can't really speak for Tourism, but I can speak as a member of the Tourism Committee, but we were looking at more of creating a signature event that is indigenous strictly to Canton, that would be something that we could build on years to come. We want to fill the hotels, we want to fill the restaurants, we want retail to be supported, we want tourists to come and spend their money and go home. But we want something unique to Canton and Cherokee County, and that's why the assessment would be so important. I took Randy running my car for about an hour and a half before he had to drive back to Augusta when he came and did the presentation to Tourism, and he was knocked out by Heritage Park and Etowah River Park, didn't get a chance to get him up to the reservoir because we're getting into high-traffic time. But, but we have some amazing facilities that we could create something imaginative, unique for Canton, that we could take and grow exponentially over the years to come. So that's where Canton Tourism, we don't have manpower, we're all volunteers. We would have to get Parks and Rec involved, we'd have to get the Police Department involved, we'd have to get however many entities, like the River Alliance, the Tourism folks, Parks and Rec, all could be involved in this. And if it's a really fun, unique event, I can see Lions Club, Junior League, everybody getting involved in it, and everybody benefiting from it. So any questions for me, folks? And thanks for letting me speak.
Mr. Rust?
What, John?
Laney, would you head this up?
No.
Well, you just told us everything we need.
No, I have an answer for that.
We need you. We need you to work with Randy.
I have an answer for that. I have a point person for you. No.
So basically, you would do the planning and marketing of an event, the actual management of that, and running of the event. Would that be you, or would that be volunteers?
If we're driving the project, then us, you know, and we have, what I was going to say before is that we have a couple of different options that we can look at. There are a lot of event management groups, and so, you know, depending on the nature of the event, we could contract with a group. We'd still have to act as the interface, you know, because if we're hired, we're representing the community, and so we've got to answer directly to you. But yeah, I mean, we have to drive the entire project, and before we would sign off on it, we would have all the details basically laid out so that you could approve it.
Well, we just got these, as you may know, so we, everyone, I would ask everyone to, you know, take a look at those in the next few days, and we probably will put it on the agenda for the sixth, is it fifth or sixth? Anyway, first Thursday in December for discussion. And then, we would act on it at our next meeting, which would be, typically act on it at our next meeting, which would be the 20th, I guess.
Can I make one more comment to answer John's question, Mr. Rust? I think that with, if we contract Due North Sports Partners, we would need a point person here for Randy to interact with, as opposed to having to come to commission or going to Billy all the time, or whatever. And I do have someone in mind for that, that has experience of managing sports events, and it's just a matter of getting that person into play, but I can't do it, I can't take it on, I've got too many plates spinning right now. But I will be highly involved in it, because I do like getting things done and making Canton wonderful. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question?
Is it done with me?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Good idea. Okay, we'll have a consideration to approve the agenda, but first, I would like to add a, an executive session will be added to the agenda for, to discuss potential litigation.
I would like to have a council introduce item, Mr. Mayor. And if I could bump the 10B down one and just take, right after the 10A, I would like to have this council introduce item, to discuss the possibility of a moratorium on any building in the corridor from Riverstone Parkway up to past Laurel Canyon until March 31st, 2018, to see if the possibility, it's not all city-controlled property, but what is controlled by us, to just discuss the possibility of a moratorium, so we can have a chance to assess traffic patterns that we cannot control.
Okay.
Thank you.
We would put that, and I think it's probably a good place to put that before the other issues come up there, but request, it would come right after TNA, request for funding to set up a second table.
Thank you.
Any other additions or changes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Still moved.
Mr. Goodman made the second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Okay, you have in your agenda package the minutes from October the 26th, Water and wastewater master plan work session. You also have the minutes from November the 2nd, council meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to those?
Motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion to approve, Mr. Grant and Mr. Rust seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. Under 10-minute public input period, I think we have about four people. I wanted to make sure that we've had to change on this a little bit, the wording. If, if the, we basically, the City of Canton is the governing and zoning authority of the city, and on any issues that we have held a, advertised and held a public hearing for, we cannot receive additional public input on that zoning issue before the council. Okay? Now, your presence says volumes, okay? But, and we've gotten a lot of emails, but I just wanted to make sure that anybody that signed up, if they're going to talk about any zoning issue that, for which a public hearing has been held, we cannot receive additional public input at this point. We do want, and we have and want to hear from everyone, for sure, and we've got, like I said, lots of emails and everything, but when the public hearing, we've got some legal considerations to deal with on this issue. So, that's pretty much, I think, state law, so that's what we're going to do. Okay, under Charlie Hall, this is not about the zoning, is it? If it is, we can hear it.
Sir?
Sir?
I'm sure.
If it has to do with annexation or zoning.
It has to do with some of those issues, it's not specific. Okay?
If it's input related to that, we can't hear it.
Input related?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, let me start my presentation.
I can stop you, right?
And you stop me. You're, yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmember. I appreciate the privilege of being able to speak to you tonight, and I'll be very brief. My name's Charlie Hall. I've been a citizen of the city for the last year and a half, and I want to, on behalf of my wife and a number of people in back of me, thank you all for the number of years of work that you've done to develop this community. We did a search when we were looking to move, when I retired, and we picked Canton, and we had never looked back. We couldn't be any happier.
You can stop now.
With the work that you've done, to, you know, in terms of, again, I don't want to say zoning, but in terms of your development and bringing services to this, to this great community. Purpose tonight is just encouraging you to continue that tradition. There's a number of citizens behind me that Soleil and other folks that are concerned about several of the issues that you may be talking about in the future, and we just want to continue to emphasize that we've been, some folks have said we don't want growth. We certainly do want growth, we've seen growth, and we certainly support that. We just would like to make sure that it's appropriate and planned growth as we go forward. Again, I don't know the details to that, but we want to continue to see that, you know, we know that there's needs for housing for all levels of income, there's resources that need to be provided for the citizens that are here, and also those that would come in the future, and we want to be sure that the long-term impact, as I know you'll look at this, as you, as these things come in front of you, to make the right decisions as we go forward. My request tonight's three things, I'll be very brief. I know there's, you are not accountable, and you just mentioned you're going to do some work on Highway 140, and that's a state, county, city issue, and I just want to say that the reason I was drafted, or let myself be drafted by these folks behind me, got put up here, is that I had an incident at 140 the other night. It's been raining several nights, and I was coming home, and I almost hit somebody. Teenage kid, he was trying to avoid puddles in the street, and I wasn't speeding, but I came really close to hitting him. And I just, I think there needs to be a lot of work done on that highway. I don't want somebody else to be in my position of being 69-years-old and thinking that because of a situation that a life was ended or curtailed because of, because of not having proper resources on that highway with the amount of traffic there, the amount of people walking, no sidewalks, et cetera. So I would encourage you to look at that as you go forward. I see you're going to have a report tonight, and I'm not talking about zoning, but I'm just talking about general safety, and particularly on that road, and it just, it's totally, needs a lot of work done on it. And I know you're, I looked at a little bit of the staff input that you're getting, and I know you're getting a lot of staff input. I just encourage you as you go forward, with that input, that you be sure that the recommendations are detailed, and you're getting all the information you want, and I know you've done that in the past, and will do that in the future. The last thing, the third thing, is just to look at the density. I mean, that's the issue, and again, I'm not talking about zoning, but as you look at the overall aspects of who lives along that highway, what they're going to be coming out, how they're going to come in and go out of the area, is that you look at the density of the people, make sure that we've got the resources there to take care of it. So, again, I know you're working on this, hopefully I didn't violate any.
I'll be honest with you, that's a pretty good skirt in the issue a little bit, but you did, you did an excellent job there, keeping it in general.
Thank you for the opportunity. Talk to you, and I just, you know, you've done such a great job in the past, let's not get in a real hurry to approve things, you know, to take your time, we'll support you to take your time and make the right decisions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta here in Canton, Georgia. I do ask for your favorable consideration tonight on second reading for final passage on the school safety zone map provisions that's been presented to you as initially approved two weeks ago. I know that it's pending. I know that it's pending final recommendation and potential action tonight, and I do ask respectfully that each member of council, uh, find it to vote yes and, uh, bring this matter to a conclusion. It's about six months' worth of work on my end, working back and forth with the school district and whatnot, trying to get all these maps and correspondence prepared for you, and I do ask that my efforts not be in vain. Uh, however, in conclusion, in my fleeting moments, I would like to share, should I be remiss to fail to mention, that the school district is currently accepting bids on the building C, Old High School there. It was advertised in the county legal organ. I do believe they're selling it for two and a half million dollars and some one to two acres worth of property there. So, if the school should receive a bidder and if the school board should announce, again, that's pending, but if they should at some point in the future announce that that property will, uh, change hands, um, this map may again require a second visit to delete it entirely from the index. But for now, the map that's presented pending council action tonight is sufficient for all the legal developments that have happened up to and at this point, including, uh, the city's land slot agreement.
I have a statement to make. Maybe my last opportunity to tell you, Thomas, how much I have enjoyed your eloquent presentation to this council. I really, you do a great job, and I really, really appreciate the way you've come before us always.
Thank you, Mr. Rust. And, and, and believe, believe me when I, I'll be the first to tell you, um, you're going to be missed, but I'm sure, I'm sure you're still going to be here and visit with us. Uh, but I, I, I'm, I'm very much appreciative of your leadership, and I, uh, on that note, I would ask if you would consider making the motion tonight on that particular item being first to act. That would be, that would be, that, that would be a gift well received.
You know, as long as it passes.
That's it. If you would, if you would bring it forward or seconded, that'd be great. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Vic Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Appreciate this very much. I'm also like Charlie new to the area. I retired eighteen months ago and moved here from Apex, North Carolina to Canton. And just real quickly, uh, when I decided to retire, my wife said, well, I'm moving to Georgia. You can come with me if you want to, because we have twelve grandkids that live in this immediate area.
Wow.
And, uh, you know, there's no doubt I was coming along for the ride, but, and we love it here. Absolutely. This is our second tour in Georgia. We, this is our eighth house, and we've moved around quite a bit, but we absolutely love it. Just give you a little quick, what I want to talk is, is kind of some general observations, living in Soleil and some of the overall growth that's taking place there. I'll make it general.
Keep it general.
Okay, and give you a little bit just quickly about my background. I lived in Peachtree City, Georgia thirty years ago, and when that place was really booming, and, uh, ended up on the board of the Chamber of Commerce for two years and president of chamber for a year. And when I, they asked me to be the president of chamber, uh, I said, I want to meet with the board privately to discuss the direction I want to take the chamber in, because this county and the municipalities are growing so rapidly. I think the chamber should help facilitate and be involved in it, and, and I said, I don't think we're, we have what I would call balanced growth for the, for the county. They agreed with that. We changed the whole way the chamber operated and worked closer with the mayors and the, and the county commissioners, uh, and focused on balanced growth and what that means to the community as a whole. We're, you know, which to me, balanced growth is, you look at it two ways, population and you have the housing, the residential, multifamily, uh, uh, facilities, and then revenue. Where's your revenue coming from to support that? And, uh, spent a lot of time, a lot of nights doing that. So, in saying that, uh, my observations, if you look where we live, right off one forty and see all the things that are taking place and the things that are proposed to take place, uh, if you look at the proposal, uh, for, um, uh, the apartment complex...
We, we can't talk, we can't, we can't add any input about that particular zoning.
All right, let me just do this. If you go through all the development there...
Okay.
And, and you go through the list, uh, in two to three years, there could be a thousand three hundred and forty-seven new houses and apartment complexes there. And that means if it's two people living in each one, that's double that, twenty-six hundred people. And if you assume a third of those have two cars, you're going to add seventeen hundred cars on, on one forty. And to me, the way that road's designed, it, there's no way it can accommodate anything like that. I've gone through two, two red lights in the last, uh, three weeks where I've gone through the light turning red before I could get to, to it, and I had to sit and wait on it. And if you add a hundred, two or three hundred cars on an I forty, it's just going to get compounded. You know it as well as I do. So, I really think, and if I heard you right, you want to put a moratorium on any building in that area, I would really think you need to step back and reassess that highway. I know you don't have control over it, but if you do make the decision to continue to, to grow that area, then you're making a decision to have problems on that road. The state can say, hey, we didn't make those decisions that the council did. So, I just...
Yeah, thank you.
That's my observations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I will say, when you say we have control, that unfortunately, most of the property that adjoins that is out of city control.
Yeah.
You know, it's in the unincorporated area of the county. So, most of the property adjoining one forty way up through there is, is outside that, believe it or not. Shouldn't be, but it is.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you, sir. Susan Stanton?
My name is Susan Stanton. I live at four thirty Cherokee Streets, and I was one of the five residents at the last council meeting, and something that the mayor said struck me and, uh, made it absolutely necessary, unfortunately, that I'd be here tonight to speak about transparency and honesty. I swear that I, I intend that everything I say will be the truth. Most of it can be verified in one method or another. Uh, if you need help with that, I'll be happy to lend a hand. Uh, I don't take this lightly, and I truly regret the circumstances that caused me to be here today. I'm going to start talking about transparency and honesty mainly by talking about the fire department consolidation, because in that process, there were many instances that involved, I'm going to say, the lack of transparency and the lack of honesty. And it kind of covers a whole gamut of items, so I'm just going to, um, start there, and we can start with, uh, the meeting that was held on August second, supposedly a executive session, which all my training as city clerk taught me was not a valid reason for an executive session, which is a closed meeting, public not allowed. And the topic that was discussed was fire department consolidation. The idea was introduced, and I didn't believe then, as I told you, and I don't believe now, that that was a valid reason to make that a closed session, an executive session. That meeting was followed up by what is called a rolling quorum on August twelfth, when the mayor met with two council members in the morning and then met with two more council members in the afternoon. That also is not ethical. Uh, I don't know that it's totally illegal, but it's totally unethical, because it avoids having a quorum and making it an open meeting. So, we have these meetings at the beginning of August, but for some reason, it isn't put on the agenda for the eighteenth of August. Um, the fire department consolidation agreement is, is not put on the agenda, which, um, since the, since it was put on for September first, and at that time, the mayor was telling everybody that this had to be voted on on September first, if he had put it on the August eighteenth schedule, he would have made the two meeting, he, he always tells us over and over again, an item should be on two agendas before it's voted on. So, if it had been on the August eighteenth agenda, voting on the first wouldn't have been an issue at all, because it would have been there twice. However, we were told, or you were told, or so was the public, that this had to be voted on, on, on September first. So, what he's asking for is a vote on Canton's one hundred-year-old fire department with only six days' notice to the public, no public input, no public hearing, but even Puppy Mills got a hearing, a public hearing. For some reason, our fire department didn't. And oddly enough, nobody bothered to ask why this had to be voted on the first. I know it was supposed to be voted on by Cherokee County the next week, however, uh, the chairman was on vacation, so I don't know how it was determined it would be voted on. It wasn't voted on until September twentieth. So, the way things played out, there really was no rush to get this done. So, that in itself is misleading. That whole, from, from August second, when the first meeting was held, until September first, when you all were supposed to vote on it with six days' notice, the poll, all that was misleading in my eyes. And then on September first, we can look at some of the information that was provided to the public and council on that night. Um, I'm not going to go over all of it, but some of it. We were told, uh, one of the first things that was announced is that we can't charge seniors, because we can't add to the property tax. This isn't a property tax. It has nothing to do with the property tax. It's a, it's a fire service fee. That's what everybody, that's how everybody else is charged, as a fire service fee. And it didn't have to go through the city, so the city didn't even have to think about billing. The county would do the billing. So, I don't, I, all that can only be to lead us to the point where everybody sixty-one and under is going to pay for fire services. So, that was a half-truth. It wasn't even half the truth. It was one-third of the truth, because there were other options for billing, but we were not informed of that. We were also told that, uh, the fire services depart, or there, a fire services committee had recommended that council approve the consolidation agreement. That's not true. I was at the August twenty-fourth fire services meeting, and while the council members there did a very good job pretending they knew nothing about the consolidation agreement with, that they were presented with on August second, um, no decision was made, and it was just, uh, announced that there is this agreement now, and you might want to put off considering bids, which they did. But the idea that the fire services department recommended that the council adopt the consolidation agreement is totally false. We were told, um, fire department was behind this, and everybody's going to land on their feet. Well, we all know that didn't happen. I mean, I've spoken with some of them. That did not happen, and if, we probably could have projected that would not happen to begin with, because they were not all behind this consolidation. As far, excuse me, as cost is concerned, we know what they say about figures. You can massage them to tell them whatever story you want. So, I'm not even going to go there, but it's my understanding, now this may not be the truth, that we're paying more...
You got, you got two more minutes, then you can come back in two weeks and finish.
That we, um, are actually paying more than was projected. So, and I'm not talking about the merits of whether consolidation was a good idea. I'm just talking about the process. The fire consolidate, the fire department consolidation process was a total snow job on the residents of Canton. It was disrespectful, and it's insulting to me as a resident of Canton. However, I was clerk at that point. I really couldn't say anything. Well, I did say something, and I think that's part of what got me fired, so. Um, anyway, last meeting, the mayor brings up water and sewer. He's worried about fairness, but no fairness as regard to the three-dollar subsidy that the seniors have been getting for years. He defended that to the bitter end. No worry about, uh, sir, same cost for the services. Everybody pay equally for fire service. So, that's kind of not a, not a legit reason for his concern about fire or about the water and sewer system. In the mayor's campaign letter many years ago, he stated that transparency and honesty were very important to him, and he, he made a commitment to bring that to all of us. Everybody will be treated fairly, and will have the opportunity to be heard on issues important to this city. So, what I'm asking now is that, Mayor, you start doing this and take the whole council with you, and be transparent and be honest with the residents of Canton, because that's not what I've been experiencing. There's a lot more I could say about all this. You're ready to stop me?
Two weeks later, you come on in and start again.
Okay. There's a lot more I could say. Please just begin...
I do appreciate your comments very much.
Please just begin honesty and transparency, and this is the first time I've heard of, Mayor, that you have ever limited somebody's public input. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I will make some statements about that a little bit later, because that was really an attack, that I feel that, uh, this council has never seen the transparency like we have here today, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. Thank you. Appreciate your input, you know, we welcome any of it, criticism at all, so, come ahead. Okay, next item. Okay, that's all the ten-minute public input, thank goodness, so we'll, we'll move on there. Under old business, uh, discussion and possible action, a fee waiver app, application for steep tea house. Lynn, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Uh, this is my, um, second time here regarding this fee waiver application. The last meeting I was, I attended was an appeal, and I believe we are here again today for the second part of the appeal.
Okay.
Decision.
Mr. Pepper, do you have anything you want to add to the process where we've, uh, moved along with this? I know, I think, I think the, the consideration is, uh, is for about eight hundred dollars, right?
That is correct.
And, uh, I think, I think the, what we have to be cautious about is any precedent or what other, other businesses may have already done the same, if the application was made after, uh, uh, the building permits and, uh, building was, has already started. But, uh, oh, Mr. Rust, go ahead.
You know, I, Lynn, I think most of us up here would like very much to grant you this waiver. However, uh, as Mr. Mayor says, it's a precedent, so if we did this for you as an exception, we would have to go back and do it, actually go back to other people during that period, or maybe even before, that had never been afforded the opportunity either, for various reasons they didn't know. So, I, I think the only thing I could hope that there's a way, I know there's some street front enhancements that the city can contribute, I think up to twenty-five hundred dollars. I wish there was some way we could provide you something that would help your business to the tune of eighteen, eight hundred dollars that wasn't this way, because I think this is the wrong way. I think it's wrong because of other businesses and unfair to them. And I'm trying to think of a way, I don't know, maybe Billy could come up with something or Matthew or somebody of a way to help you, which would not be violating what I think is a precedent-setting issue, which we shouldn't do. That's, I mean, if I vote against it, my heart says not to do that, and I think I'm going to, that's where I would lean, unless you can tell me some of the reasons.
Well, this was an incentive for new business owners.
Oh, I know that, but it came after the fact. That's the problem.
Well, as you...
Rules, you didn't know the rules. You found out the rules after the fact, and therefore are ineligible for it. It's like a, it's like a coupon that ran out on you, you know? You can't, you can't get...
Well, I don't, I don't think of it as a coupon.
No, no, but I mean, it's an incentive. It was a, it was a business incentive. I'm just using comparison.
Right. And, and there again, too, uh, let me also add that, uh, Mr. Thomas, um, had given me this fee waiver application, and as you know, uh, whenever you have construction, um, contractors, they're licensed, so in order for them to even begin a project, they have to pay the permits. That's the way the law reads. They were not made aware of any kind of fee waiver application. They did that on their own, because they were doing what they were supposed to do as a licensed contractor. The fee waiver application, it was kind of the cart before the horse kind of thing, but the fact remains is that it was an incentive to new business owners.
Could I ask our city manager something? Billy, were we remiss? Billy, were we remiss for not notifying the contractors that there was a fee waiver available to them? Did, did we as a city make a mistake?
No, the fee waiver- The fee waiver would not go directly to the actual licensee, the contractor. The fee waivers for the project, and so-
So it'd go to the owner?
Correct. And so what would, what would typically happen in an incentive deal is that as the project comes in for discussion, and we start hearing about this project's going in this location, and this is what they would like to do from a financial standpoint, an investment, the city would talk about various incentives that might be available for that particular project. Those incentives would be approved as part of a development agreement, so to speak, ahead of the project. And so, you know, it's not, it's not very much different than what the state of Georgia does, when they try to incentivize a large economic development deal. Before the contracts are signed, before the work starts, the incentives are in place. In this instance, the incentives weren't in place when the permits were first pulled, because they were first pulled in October. So work actually started on the project prior to the application for the waiver. And so, the reason why I denied the, the fee waiver in this instance has to do with the language that's actually on the form, which says that the disposition of the application shall be by the city manager of the city of Canton. Approval of this application must be accomplished prior to the issuance of permits, and must be included with the permitting application. So you would have this application turned in by the contractor at that time, each individual contractor on the-
Did I just shut yours off? Did, should Matthew have given this to, to her, to Lynn?
You know, in a perfect world, we would have every single incentive together, and we would hand it out on every project that comes in. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't always happen like that, though. I mean, some people start projects before they ever come and meet with anybody at City Hall. And so in that instance, they wouldn't get the information. It was here, if there had, you know, I, I wasn't privy to all the conversations, but in October, before a contractor came in, if the, if the business owner said, you know, "Tell me about every single incentive that the city has," and it wasn't provided, then that's an issue. I can't speak to that. All I can speak to is the dates the permits were pulled, and the date the application came to me.
When I push my microphone down, I'm shutting you off. I think, yeah, they're, we're shutting each other off. But, oh, thank you, Billy. I don't have any more questions. Thanks, thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Grant? Was-
Were there any? No, I haven't touched him.
Okay. Stop.
She turned her side, she turns yours off.
Was there, were there any conversations about the project prior to that?
Yes.
Conversations with-
With Mr. Thomas.
Do we have any record of that?
I don't know.
All I have is the application.
As I had stated in the letter, the application that I had filled out was misplaced in some other paperwork that Mr. Thomas found later on. So he went ahead and turned it in after the fact. If you look at the form, the fee waiver application, it's dated February 13th. And it looks like it was signed off by our city manager on September 7th, September of this year. So it was lost in paperwork, is what had happened. I was wondering why I hadn't received any kind of reimbursement or anything.
But what I'm going with is the fact that the first permit was pulled on October 26th of 2016.
That is correct.
And the waiver came in on February of 2017.
That's because we started discussion with doing the Steep Tea House, the construction of it in October of last year. And the, the incentive of the fee waiver application wasn't presented to us until February. We were not made aware of it, and the contractors had already paid all of their fees, because they have to as licensed contractors. So basically what this is, is not a fee waiver. It's a waiver reimbursement for me as a new business owner, as an incentive. You know, having a business in the city, I have some information here from the United States Treasury Department, the National Federation of Business, as of 2017. Small business represents 90% of our country's employers, employing nearly half of our country's private sector workers, and by this, it creates three out of every four new jobs. I, as a business owner, have created six new jobs in this city. And only 2.4% of small business report incomes of excess of $250,000 per year. In fact, 88% of income tax returns by small business owners show adjusted gross income of less than $200,000 per year. And if anyone in this room understands what it's like to run a business in a city, it's extremely expensive this day and time. And I am asking for a reimbursement of something that I feel that was an incentive that was supposed to have been given to me, and I found out after the fact. And $800 is not very much money, but for me as a small business owner, it's a lot. And that's all that I'm asking.
Ms. Wilson, you have?
I wanted to ask one question, and then I wanted to make a statement. Do we allow reimbursement for contractor fees? Have we done that in the past, when they've been submitted as incentives?
The only other example of this particular incentive of waiving fees that I can think, 151 West Main, when that building was originally built, there were some incentives there. And then there were some incentives as it related to permitting fees on the project that the Harrises were working on, on Academy Street. In both of those situations, it was based on the owners of property, the owner of the actual property being approved, and it was part of, what I'll say, a development agreement before the project started. That, that's the only two cases I have of this in the past.
Okay. I was just trying to find a way that it wouldn't set any kind of precedent. And I just want to make a statement. I think the word incentive is the operative word. That means that we're looking for business to come into the city, so we're able to offer incentives to businesses as they bring their projects to the city. So that's the operative word here. And I agree with you, $800 on the city scale doesn't seem like much, and I know it's a lot to you as a small business owner, so I certainly am sympathetic with your cause. But I wonder if this is after the fact, or if you were, made promises that we're not able to comply with now.
Mr. Russ?
There's enough gray, there's enough gray between the black and white here. I think you've changed my mind. Meaning, I, I think we could have done a better job of presenting incentives to you when you first came in. And that's on us. So I, I'm going to hopefully support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The, the, I think Ms. Wilson kind of hit it on head to a degree there. This is an incentive as a tool, I believe, for the city to use to bring businesses into the city. And if a, if a, if a business just moves into the city, you didn't really need an incentive to bring it in, you know? Now, what other businesses would be in a similar, I guess, Billy, do you know what other businesses would be in a similar thing? Maybe local on the north, I don't know? And Queenies, or some of those that they paid?
Well, the question would be, did any business that came into town over a specific period of time, were they given the opportunity to know about this particular incentive? And if they weren't, then we would, they would be eligible for the same reimbursement?
If, if you reimburse, is that what you're saying? Yeah, they would be eligible?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Grant?
Can you clarify for me? Is the incentive a reimbursement? It's a waiver, which, waiver is prior to, or is it listed as reimbursement?
The way the process is set up, you would approve the waiver, and then as the contractors come in to pull the permit, they would bring a copy of the waiver with their paperwork, and our folks downstairs would void out the fee based on that waiver.
So it wouldn't be charged, it's not reimbursed?
That's correct.
And in the two instances you cited before, it's not been in the form of reimbursement before?
Correct.
So if we did this, we would be setting a precedent for reimbursement? Or open the door for reimbursement?
Mr. Allen?
I think, to me, the question is, I understand what everybody's saying, we don't want to set a precedent where anybody can just come back and say, "Well, she got it, we should get it." I think the question in this instance is, did we create an expectation to her that we, she was eligible for this even after the fact? And if we made that representation, or created that expectation, then I don't see that it's an, it's a precedent setting for any other sake, unless we did the same thing again. In that case, someone that just didn't know about it, and we don't tell them that, "Hey, you could have gotten this," I don't think that creates the precedent in my mind. I think we're fulfilling what we created, we kind of created an obligation to her by making, giving her the expectation that she would be able to receive this even after the fact. And that's where it's kind of falls for me.
Is that, is that what happened? Mr. Pepper, do you know if that's what happened or not?
It'd be more of a question for Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The fee waiver application was presented, I think, back in January. So in the early phases of the project, it, it was shared that it could perhaps function as a reimbursement, but that was not with the guarantee. We did not use the word incentive. I understand that is a very careful word, and in any economic development practice, you want to be careful in how you word that. This was not presented as such. We did discuss other funding mechanisms early on in the project, such as the downtown development revolving loan fund, which was used for Queenies. The State Department of Community Affairs thought that this project didn't necessarily fit the threshold of expectations that they typically lend money to for those projects. So this was never shared as a sort of guarantee or expectation that, that this proposal would receive a green light. It was, it was simply offered to the business owner, understanding that new investment on projects can sometimes exert a lot of money on, on the pockets of entrepreneurs. But at the same time, too, it was not presented as a incentive for investment, if you will. Simply an option that is available to help relieve the costs associated with opening a new business or new development.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I, I do want to clarify, and I know at that time period, we talked, and, and I know you did a lot to, to, to help Ms. Moya, and I appreciate that, and I know she does also. But I heard you say it was presented as a possibility of a reimbursement. Correct? So it was discussed as a possibility of reimbursement. As you were trying to find tools-
Sure.
-to help her, so I just want to clarify that that was presented as a possibility for reimbursement.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
What was that? Was it presented to the other new residents in the same manner?
No, sir. Well, they, they, at the same time, though, never asked, never, never really had a sit-down other than, you know, the discussion of finding space, finding opportunities. When it came to the discussion of, typically, we depend on the businesses themselves to ask that question. That way, that lets us know how to fit, what programs we could offer to tailor towards their needs. That happens across the board for any project.
Mr. Russ?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any, have a second.
Based on the discussion here, and the presentation that you said that you had offered her the possibility of reimbursement rather than incentive, I'm going to second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Sorry, it took some loss. Okay, the next item, discussion possible action on Article 7 of Chapter 114 of the Water and Wastewater Ordinance. We've talked about this. This is not really adopting a, essentially a new ordinance. It's just including in our, in codification of the, into our UDC, I believe. Is that correct? Okay. Any, any discussion on that?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Mr. Russ seconded that motion, didn't you?
He made the motion.
He made it, and you, oh, Mr. Grant seconded it. Okay. Okay, the next item, discussion of possible action on street closing for the Optimist Club Christmas parade and concert. Do we need, uh-
We do have the updated insurance policy.
Okay. We have a motion and a second? Ms. Wilson made the second. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, all members voting for the motion. Thank you. Discussion on possible action on the request of downtown Canton School Safety Zone map amendment.
We've talked about this a lot. Motion to approve.
Okay. Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Item E, discussion of possible action on a total not-to-exceed cost for the Jones Building. Mr. Peppers?
Aye. Yes, Mayor and Council. I had presented to each of you earlier this week the information submitted by Garbutt Construction. Guaranteed maximum price for the Jones Building project, as provided by them, is $3,029,272. That number includes $121,000 of contingency, as well as a $25,000 line item for site civil engineering. That site civil engineering is related to the sidewalk, sidewalk areas on the exterior of the building that might have to be changed based on the project to make sure everything meets ADA compliance on the sidewalk. Garbutt Construction did bid out all of the portions of the project, and so all of the lowest remoter spots of bidders are shown in that last column. CFO, Mr. Ingram, our building official, Mr. Crosby and I reviewed the documents and the bid information. With the CM at risk, the project is open book, which means that if any portion of the project comes in above what was bid, that cost is absorbed by the construction manager and not by the city. And in addition, with it being an open book, if anything should come in underbid, or if there are any items in there that are based on calculation, certain square feet, number of materials or what have you, and it's not utilized, those funds are retained by the city as part of that. It also includes the $800,000-some of dollars that y'all had approved earlier in October for pre-construction and demolition within the project. So that $3 million number is all-inclusive. Okay?
Mr. Russ?
Just to clarify something, Billy, if, under this Garbutt contract, one portion of the contract comes in $200,000 over, and two or three others come in collectively $200 under, we get $200. Garbutt pays $200. Is that correct?
It's based on the individual pieces of the project.
It's based on the individual pieces of the project, so-
If they're different pieces. If they're different pieces and one piece is way over budget, two hundred over, Garbutt picks that up. If two portions or whatever, or two portions collectively are two hundred under, we get the two hundred, they pay the two hundred. Is that true? That's what it sounds like?
Within, within the bucket phase of the project. So for instance, demolition is a phase of the project. If demolition is under, then we get the savings. If a piece of demolition is under but a piece of demolition is over, say for instance, the, uh-
I don't care, but- I get the gross demolition is one thing, but I'm talking about pieces that aren't collectively demolition, there's-
Yeah, it-
We, we, we win, you lose, is the way this thing is set up, is that? Just trying to clarify that.
It, it's based on the total and it's based on anything within that total. Does that make sense?
Answer my question, because within that total, it's zero, no difference. The way it's, the way you presented it, it sounds like we win, you lose. Meaning if demolition is one huge project, but there's phases to this not to exceed, and, and it sounds like the way you presented it is that we, we could win and they could lose even though the total might be grossly even. And I'm just trying to clarify. If I'm wrong, maybe I don't understand what you presented.
So in this situation, what would happen is you would approve a guaranteed maximum price. The project will not be more than the guaranteed maximum price. If at any point during the project, an item comes in under, that would be held until any change orders that might be made on the project. So if there's, if for instance, we come back and we ask them to do something that wasn't in the original project, all of that would be closed out with a change order at the end and all of that, if there's, if there's things that are under that guaranteed maximum price, that would come back in one change order to benefit the city. Does that make sense?
Still didn't answer my question. We're, we're not talking about change orders, Billy. I mean, you're, you're telling me that if they come in over, if, if a portion of it comes in over, they have to eat it. If it's the final bill, it's, it's over, they have to eat it. But I thought there was components of it, that if it came in under, we benefit from that.
We do benefit, but, but it's all related to that not to exceed number, okay? You benefit in, in this phase, you, it costs you more over here, it costs them more.
So, so it's not to exceed in a gross number, not any, any portion?
And then it would be a rolling calculation of anything under that.
That makes more sense. I mean, I met Charlie Garbutt, he sounds like too smart to sign this agreement like that. Thank you.
On the, on the subcontractors on the, the line items, will we, will the CDB have an opportunity to review the final invoices on those?
Yes, with it being an open book, all of that documentation is part of the, the book that we do receive.
Anyone else have a question? Comments?
Second.
We have a motion and-
Jack, I'm second.
Mr. Goodman made the motion, Mr. Russ seconded the motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Get this thing moving even quicker now, hopefully. Moving along now, as everyone's seen, we finally got some work going on on the Jones Building. Item A, under new business requests, no, I believe it's Mr. Russ is the next, next one on the agenda.
No, no, I think A, 10A.
Well, you would be, but 10A is a request for funding sitting up the table. You wanted to be just before, you want to be after that, right? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Feld, come, come up and talk about, or request for a second table for decorations for Hanukkah during the holidays.
Mayor Hargood, City Manager Billy Peppers and Council Members, we want to thank you for allowing those of the Jewish faith to share in the holiday season displays at City Hall. With your monetary assistance last year, Michelle, who is not here, and I were able to set up a beautiful Hanukkah table display on the main floor at City Hall. Also, a great big thank you for the beautiful outdoor lighted menorah, which symbolizes the eight days of Hanukkah, which this year begins on December 12th at sunset. I'm just a little nervous.
It's okay.
This year, we would like to add a table on the lower level. However, we would need your financial support in the amount of three hundred dollars to the, to see this come to fruition. We need these funds to decorate the table properly. With that, we want to thank you for your consideration and support. With our sincere thanks, we await your reply. Ed Feld and Michelle Rothstein. The only thing I want to add is, December 12th is right around the corner and we do need some time, if it's going to be approved, to purchase what we need.
City Manager, a question while you're here, Mr. Feld?
Yes.
Do we really need him to come before us to ask for three hundred dollars in the future?
What we did last year is that was funded out of tourism. Tourism has traditionally paid for holiday lights on poles and, and things of the like. So, you know, if, if you're okay with it, we'll tell them to go to tourism and we'll make sure tourism has the funds to provide that.
Is that the way you want to do it or do you want to do, we can make a motion now and do it, but it just seems like you shouldn't have to come before us to get this done.
Well, it has to be a budget amendment theoretically. Well, it's three hundred or three thousand, you gotta have a budget amendment if you're gonna do it.
Fifty thousand?
It's gotta be a budgeted item.
Yes, it has to be budgeted.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Got it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now, Mr. Russ, you want to talk about the possibility of a moratorium along the State Route 140 corridor? And I'm assuming that would be until such time as a, for a certain period of time, you said ninety?
March 31st, 2018. Is that what gives the, the new council an opportunity? You're gonna have a, a retreat in that timeframe, gonna have new member of the council come in here and give the council an opportunity to look at a very high traffic corridor. I walked there on the side of the road. Almost got blown off the road. It's a very dangerous place. People drive, I think, fifty-five miles an hour if they run under the speed limit. And I think we have to figure out a way to, to look at the situation as it regard, as regards to approval of new-
New developments, what you're talking about, right?
New applications for development should be held, put on hold until March 31st. Just so we, the new council will have an opportunity to look at, is there's anything that can be done to change the pattern of such a heavy flow of traffic down that corridor? And because it's a county, city, state GDOT problem, I'm not sure what we can do, but we certainly, as a, a council, have an obligation to step back and look at it. If we got ninety to a hundred and twenty days to do that, somebody keep shutting me off. The, the, that would be a good thing, so. We can't do much tonight except put it on the agenda for the first work session in December. And that's, that's my main reason. If somebody has anything they'd like to add as the council member, I'd like to hear it, but other than that, I'd like to have this a council item for the first work session in, in December.
You, you were asking for basically a moratorium on-
Applications.
Oh, yeah, no new applications, so those that had applications in there now would be considered by the, by the council.
You can't, you can't take away what's in the system now. We're only trying to slow down or stop temporarily the, the new applications. I, I, I don't think we need a motion.
Who's next? Bill? Mr. Grant?
You know, I do, I do think it's a good idea and I do think, you know, certainly it should be for anything new or I think we also should, anything that's not in process now, I think anything that's not applied for, but maybe the-
Right.
-December the sixth meeting or, or twentieth or whatever the next one is. But as I said before, on a couple of projects we're looking at in other areas of the city that we don't have a, you know, holistic plan for, that, you know, we, it's hard to, to look at any one individual project and say, okay, this, this project is going to, to cause all the problems and, and it's a more holistic issue. And we know we have issues there and we know that there's some issues that we can't control, but we know that there's some issues, I mean, we know there, there are projects that we can vote on that do have impact on, on existing poor conditions there. And, and we know that there are issues with traffic there and we know developments that, that are gonna, you know, not have a significant impact on poor traffic conditions that are there already, but not a significant impact on poor traffic conditions that already exist is not a very good way to make a decision. But, so I, I support the, the moratorium as long as on new projects only and, and projects that are not in process.
Okay.
I think it makes sense.
Thank you. Ms. McGrue?
Thank you. I also support the moratorium. I think it's very much needed. It's a dangerous road, a two-lane road, it's not well-lighted. And I see people, mothers with children walking in the weeds back and forth from where they live in the P Ridge area to Walgreens or to Publix. And I have great concern of these people walking in the weeds. There's an elderly gentleman who rides his bicycle through there. We need a safe way for those walkers and bike riders to get through. And I've taught many times about a trail system. Also, the road is poorly lighted. The intersection of Great Sky Parkway and Royal Canyon Parkway is poorly lighted. It would help if we, we had some more lights there so that we could see better to turn in the evening and to see pedestrians. I would like for council to talk with our state representatives and ask them to join us in our request to the GDOT to improve this road sooner than later. The last I heard, the improvement schedule was somewhere around 2040. We'll be dead. So I would like to encourage this council to get our state representatives to support us in our efforts to make it safe for our citizens. And let's have GDOT and our state reps down for a meeting and show them what we're dealing with.
Mr. Russ?
Thank you, Ms. McGrue. And to your point, Bill, yes, certainly the moratorium would apply only to those applicants who had not come in to apply for development yet. So we can't, we can't cut somebody off that's in the system, but that's certainly the plan. But we can discuss all those things next month. Thank you.
There's no objection, obviously, to this being placed on the agenda for December the sixth, is it sixth, fifth, seventh? Oh, December the seventh, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay. So we will put that for discussion on there at that time and with the possibility of action at that time. Mr. Russ?
Not Mr. Russ. That's Mr. Russ. Just as a technical thing for you, if you recall, we had to replace some of the system in here because of a lightning strike. I've been with IT just now and when they reset it, it's only set for two microphones at a time. So click your clicker so the mayor can figure out who's in the queue. If you turn your mic on, you'll turn somebody else off, so.
But I'm fortunate, mine stays on all the time, though. Okay. All right, we'll, we'll place that on the next agenda. Okay, item, the next item, discussion of the proposed annexation of 1.039 acres located at 2139 Reinhardt College Parkway into the city. Mr. Patton, we've talked about this before, I think, but-
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
... late presentation.
You want to-
And let, let me say before we begin to, in keeping with our, our policy now, our, hopefully, if, if there are questions, I know the developer's here, but if there are questions, please direct those questions to the staff and Mr. Patton there and, and he can get or have the answers to any questions you may have. That would make sense, wouldn't it? It can be done, that's all. Okay, you got it?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, what I was doing, this is the latest, newest piece of technology that the city has purchased. Mainly, we're gonna be using it with our development review team with presentations for planning commission, but plan, online plan review as well. It is a, a smart board that we can review plans on and markup and red line comments directly on the board, save all of that as a PDF through our track-it system and send those comments through that back to the applicants and designers. But what I pulled up is the city's website, our GIS aerial photography, the subject property of case AX-1709001 is 1.039 acres. It is, I mean, it's that property that everyone can hear in, is this particular piece of property right here, is proposed annexation. It is adjacent to existing City of Canton property. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to annexation.
If anyone, if anyone has any questions, please direct them to Ken. Mr. Russ?
Planning and zoning came back and recommended that we approve this, correct?
Planning Commission does not hear or say anything in regards to annexation. That is a city council decision.
Okay. We can deny this annexation and effectively denying this annexation would kill the next two proposals on the agenda because they propose- the next two proposals on the agenda because they proposed, the next agenda is rezoning that, that acreage and then the third one on the agenda is rezoning the entire parcel, 27 acres or whatever. But in doing so, in denying it, we have a permanent monument in that one acre to foolishness of our council in terms of, why would you do this? Because it's their property, they want to come into the city. If we deny it, there's two things that, well, one thing that might happen, we might be in litigation and they can come back at 15 units per acre versus the 10 they proposed. And not to mention the fact that if we have an acre sitting there, this entrance is gonna have to be changed to make it a higher risk entry. And therefore, I think that there's a public safety issue here. If you don't do this, you are risking higher density, more cars, more danger because they don't have the access they should have by that one acre. I, I don't think I need your opinion on this, but that's the way I see it. I could be wrong, but that's, it's Somebody's just shutting me down. They must want me to shut up, but at any rate, uh, you gotta remember another thing. At some point, we talk about all the voters in the city, you're gonna have, if you have 400 apartments, you might have six, 800 voters in there and they aren't gonna like what you did for a long time, so that's not a reason to make a decision, but you gotta answer to the current and future voters in this city because their opinions should have, carry some weight. And I really think you put people at risk by not allowing this annexation to go forward.
Ms. Wilson?
I believe that at the planning and zoning, whenever this project was discussed, the two entrances, one of them had been moved and there's one entrance and exit that exits on Highway 140 and the second entrance and exit is not directly on Highway 140. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. So, then, do you know the purpose for the annexation of this one acre?
I would tend to think that the annexation of this is somewhat related to the existing entrance into this proposed project from State Route 140.
It shows, the, the site plan shows the entrance going right through that parcel.
That is correct.
Along with a, a little bit of amenity package and parking, I believe it is, that's included within that one acre.
I didn't understand it that way. I thought that the entrance and exit was up beyond that one acre, the entrance that has, is now proposed with the other entrance and exit out in, that goes behind Publix. That was what I thought we heard at planning and zoning. Is that not right?
No, the entrance exit off of 140 into the proposed project will go through part of the one acre parcel.
Okay. So, so it is necessary in order for the project to have that, that entrance, correct?
Well, I can't answer that question directly because there is a property that they could alter that entrance, whether GDOT would approve it because of other issues related to side distance or things of that nature. That can't be answered. But the entrance location off State Route 140 into the project has received preliminary approval from GDOT.
Okay. That was my
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, any motion?
Motion to approve.
No, we're not, we're not gonna be acting on this.
This is first reading tonight.
We can't. Oh, that's right. This is just a hearing. Okay.
Yeah, this is just the work session.
Could, could we explain that because this is, I mean, this is off schedule, correct?
Yeah, it is off schedule because normally our work session
I mean, just to make that clear to everyone because it's been some confusion.
Normally, our work session is the first Tuesday and the voting session is the third Tuesday. Uh, third Thursday, I'm wrong, I'm over here. But what happened this time is there was an error in the legal advertisement as far as the date, I believe, goes. And, and it was the city's fault and so in order to sort of make up for that a little bit, we, we agreed to not delay the people who had an applicant to get an answer any further by, by making them wait another four weeks instead of the two weeks to come back in. And so, that's how it got thrown off schedule, actually, so this is essentially the work session portion of that where we just hear the information. We, we did agree that with the, that we would have it at the work session will be actually a time for voting on that issue on December the seventh, I believe. That's the voting day. Okay? Anyone else have any comments about that? Okay. I hope that's clear. It's kinda confusing though, but it was a city mistake and we're trying to correct that. The next item is the discussion of the Planning Commission recommendation to zone 1.039 acres to RM15. That's, that's the planning, the zoning part of the 1.039 acres and they're asking for that to be zoned RM15, which would be similar to, be the same zoning as the 25 acre parcel for the apartments.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. There was a public hearing that was conducted in regards to this application, Z1909-001. Planning Commission did recommend approval of zoning the property to RM15 if city council approves annexation of the property.
Can't really do anything with this one either until December.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
Any, any discussion on that? Mr. Grant?
On, on this matter, at the public hearing, was there any, did anyone speak in opposition?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
There was a written document submitted by a person who opposed this and it was read at the planning
That person did not specify whether they were opposed or in support, but they did ask the staff to read their statement for the record.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that was entered into the record and I believe you have a copy of that statement from that person.
Is that appropriate protocol, Ken, to be able to read a document like that?
If applicant cannot be at the, the hearing and there was an emergency that came up for that individual
Was it the applicant? Was it the applicant?
No.
Okay.
No, it was an individual that was in attendance at the work session that had an emergency come up, left their written documentation and asked the staff to make sure the Planning Commission was aware of their written statement and we noted for the record it had been submitted. You were provided a copy of that written statement.
It was neither positive nor negative.
Did not recommend approval or denial. It did recommend an alternative to an outright approval.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Next item, the discussion of the Planning Commission recommendation for case CUP 1709001, conditional use permit approval for apartments located at 2139 Reinhardt College Parkway.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is the third and final piece of this proposed project. It is conditional use permit approval 1709-001. It is for the entire 27.92 acres. This conditional use permit approval is because this proposed project does propose to be developed for apartments. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with the condition that this development have a maximum of 266 dwelling units.
Okay. Any questions, comments about that?
I have some.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Would it be more appropriate for me to ask my questions at the next meeting or this meeting?
No, I'd say this means work session.
Okay, I have several questions.
Okay.
I first wanted to know from, and I wanted to hear in open meeting about the utility infrastructure. I guess that's Mr. Kavon. The water and sewer infrastructure is available for this project? The next is, was there a traffic study and what did it say?
Traffic study was completed and part of the application submitted by the applicant. The traffic study indicated that this proposal would not decrease the existing level of service along State Route 140 from what it currently is for development.
My next question is about school mitigation. Was there any discussion about meeting with the Cherokee County School District about mitigation for any impact on the school?
The applicant, there was discussion at Planning Commission meeting in regards to that. The applicant indicated that they would meet with the Board of Education, but it's inappropriate to address that until after a decision has been made in regards to the conditional use permit approval of the zoning.
This is just a, a protocol question. If, if we, if the council were to recommend approval, could we add a condition that says that there has to be a meeting with school board for mitigation?
Yes, you can add that condition. Be up to the applicant to accept that or challenge it.
Okay. Tell me the class of these apartments. Are they all Class A?
From every indication that has been supplied by the applicant, these are gonna be what are considered Class A apartments.
And Class A are what has been approved for the city, correct?
Class A apartments, there are all types of apartments that have already previously been approved in the city, but this proposal is for Class A apartments.
Okay. And then my last question on this, do you know to whom this developer is planning to market these apartments?
I think that some of it is gonna be marketed towards seniors, some of it is gonna be active adults. It's gonna be a market situation with what the proposed rents are gonna be. I don't think you'll see lower income levels.
Did we hear about any rent for one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom?
That was provided. I don't recall what it is off the top of my head. I can get that information to council prior to the next meeting.
I think I probably have it in my notes. I just have it in public. Thank you.
I, I do believe one thing that, that was said in, in, in discussion was that they were going to have predominantly, I believe, one bedroom apartments as opposed to two and three. So many of two and three anyway, which indicated that there would probably be fewer schoolchildren in, in those apartments than there might be otherwise. And of course, the school system, as you know, is looking at redistricting and everything and it could also have an impact on the State Route 140 as well.
Yes, sir, that is correct. There was a smaller number of three bedroom units than there were two bedroom units and there was a smaller number of two bedroom and three bedroom than the one bedroom.
Right. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay. Next item, the discussion of case AX 1709-002, proposed annexation of 63.6 acres located 2970 Reinhardt College Parkway. With the map again. And this is the parcel that is just north on the east side of 140, just north of Laurel Canyon Parkway and Great Sky.
There is a proposal to annex 63.6 acres located at 2970 Reinhardt College Parkway into the city limits. I'm here to answer any questions you might have in regards to the annexation.
The proposal there would be to place, if zoned properly, 198 homes?
That is correct. The proposal is for 198 single-family detached residential units.
Okay. With a minimum lot size of 5,000?
Uh, once we get to the zoning, I'll read the stipulations that the Planning Commission
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Placed on that portion.
Okay, okay. Any question about the annexation? Ms. McGrew, you have something?
Thank you. Will this project be built even if the city doesn't annex the property? Will they do it through the county?
I can't answer that question. That would be up to the county. Within your package, I will note you did receive written comments from Cherokee County, specifically Jeff Watkins, my counterpart from Cherokee County in regards to this proposal.
So, you don't know if the applicant has plans to continue either way?
They have not indicated that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do.
Ms. Grant, do you have something? Okay. Oh, Ms. Wilson, go ahead.
Uh, does this project fit within our master plan for land use?
Well, this property is located within the growth boundary agreement that was put in place between Cherokee County and the City of Canton. As it relates to water and sewer as far as land use, I think it is inside also.
Okay. The other question about, I think about annexation that I have is do you know if the applicant wants to annex into the city because of density issues that would not be allowed in the county that might be allowed in the city?
That's always a consideration. That was not asked of the applicant. But generally, projects that are proposed to come into cities generally are at a higher density than what could be done on property that is currently zoned in unincorporated counties.
And it seems that with our future master plan that this only exceeds the density by about eight units. Is that right? From 190 to 198. Our maximum's 190.
And what are you talking about? 190 in a recommended density?
You're talking about 198 units requiring two, two entrances?
Are you talking about relative development entrances or?
Oh, you could have any size development of homes. Is that what you're asking theoretically?
Because this property was shown to be in a an area of influence on our comprehensive land use plan?
Okay. I don't know. I don't know if you forgot the 198 was what we did, I mean, 200 units is what we did have as a requirement for the second entrance. And, but that has been changed down to 125. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. That was reduced to 125.
Okay.
Okay, what I was talking about was the future development map that allows for 190, 90 units within the city and and this is proposal asks for 198 in the, in the city future development map.
I would have to go back and look at the future development map for this area to see what it specified. I don't recall that off the top of my head.
Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Patton, would you please define for me what an area of influence means?
When the city adopted the comprehensive plan 2008, 2009, there were some areas that were on the fringes or edges of the existing city limits at the time that the comprehensive plan was adopted and put in place. Some of these areas coincide with areas that were outside the city limits, but within the urban growth but within the urban growth boundary agreement with Cherokee County. And that was just a term that our Stakeholders Committee, Planning Commission, City Council determined was appropriate to note those areas of influence because they are adjacent to the city of Canton and are more aligned with the city of Canton.
Anyone else have any questions on that? Okay. Thank you. Item G, consideration and action on resolution of application for the Georgia Downtown Renaissance Partnership. Oh. Oh, I missed that one, didn't I? We did the annexation on that. Planning, discussion of Planning Commission recommendation for case Z-1709-002 to Zone sixty-three, to Zone sixty-three point six acres PD residential at twenty-nine seventy Reinhardt College Parkway.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Public hearing was conducted by the Planning Commission in regards to this proposal. Planning Commission did recommend approval of planned development residential zoning with the following conditions. Shall be two points of ingress egress to and from the proposed development. These shall be, as approved by the Georgia Department of Transportation. Property shall be limited to a total of one hundred and ninety-eight residential units. This results in a density of three point one one dwelling units per acre. The minimum lot size shall be five thousand square feet. The minimum lot width shall be fifty feet at the building setback line. The minimum lot depth shall be one hundred feet. The minimum setbacks, front setback ten feet, rear setback twenty-five feet, side setback fifty feet. Following lot size and minimum house sizes shall be constructed. One hundred and eight lots will have a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet and a minimum house size of one thousand six hundred square feet heated conditioned space. Fifty-three lots with a minimum lot size of seven thousand two hundred square feet and a minimum house size of two thousand square feet heated conditioned space. Thirty-seven lots with a minimum lot size of eight thousand four hundred square feet and a minimum house size of two thousand two hundred square feet heated conditioned space. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. McGrew, you have anything?
Mr. Patton, the density that they're applying for would require two entrances and exits. One forty's already stressed. Is there another road that this neighborhood could take another entrance to?
It does not have frontage on another road.
Thank you.
Ms. Grant?
Two questions. Is this being proposed as a gated community?
They did not indicate that it would be a gated community.
Okay. And you said one hundred and ninety-eight homes? And then this is adjacent to Laurel Canyon, correct?
No, this is adjacent to Great Sky.
Great Sky, okay. And then can you, Laurel Canyon and Great Sky approximately, can you remind the council of existing number of homes existing there now built and those remaining to be built approximately?
If I'd have known you were going to ask that question, I could have brought that because I just-
Thank you.
I just completed an update survey of both of those developments.
I've got that in front of me. So in Laurel Canyon, it was approved for one thousand nine hundred eighteen units. One thousand two hundred and nine of those units are built. Seven hundred and nine units left to be built. Great Sky was approved for two thousand three hundred units. Three hundred of that. Four hundred and ninety-one units are built, leaving one thousand eight hundred and nine units remaining. And then in addition, spilling onto one forty is the Preserve at Canyon Ridge. It's on Sam Nelson. That was approved for one hundred and ninety-nine units. There's currently thirty-one built, leaving one hundred and sixty-eight units left to be built.
So I think my quick math is approximately like we're looking at another additional two thousand units that will be eventually spilling on, that already approved will be spilling onto one forty.
If I might, councillor grant of the total out of Great Sky left to be built, a majority of that traffic probably will utilize reservoir drive instead of State Route 140 for their means of ingress egress.
Probably, right. Maybe half, so. So maybe fifteen hundred units spilling on. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Russ?
I was doing the math in my head, and that's a recipe for disaster, but when you started rattling off the breakdown of the size of the lot, something didn't click unless you're going to have a huge park there because you've got a density of three point one units per acre, average density of three point one. And yet not one of those lots was bigger than eight thousand square feet. And the smallest portion was eight thousand some square feet. The average lot should have been twelve-
It's based on the entire tract, sixty-three acres.
I understand that. But the, what was the hundred units or five thousand?
Minimum five thousand square feet. Forty-six percent of the total sixty-three acre site will be left in common open space.
Forty-six percent?
Correct.
Oh, that, that explains it. I could not figure out why the lots couldn't be bigger when you're having that kind of a density, but that makes sense. What, what's the purpose of all that open space? It's just parks?
That's what the applicant wanted to develop. They originally came in and talked about a conservation subdivision, and we explained to them that the city does have the allowance to develop a conservation subdivision within our zoning portion of UDC. They selected that planned development residential zoning designation as what they would move forward with and specify these lot sizes, still following guidelines associated with the conservation development.
That all sounds good if we only had a-
I will note that this applicant does have-
I know she's doing that to me on purpose.
The applicant does have an agreement with Cherokee County Board of Education. I don't know if you have received a copy of that agreement yet. I'll let Mr. Peppers pass that down. I do have copies. Board of Education, I think, was going to send a copy to mayor and council, but I made a copy when our office received that.
Could we make a requirement that they have the Jetson-type cars that fly out instead of? The only, the only thing I think that would be a big concern for us is just that traffic again, same issue. Thank you.
Was that, that was a nine hundred dollar per unit?
Yes, approximately. Somewhere around nine hundred, a little bit over. The Board of Education would, within their letter that they said they had agreement, would request that City Council approve that the city, if they approve this annexation and zoning, basically collect that contribution money and the city then reimburse the Board of Education.
You said that the Planning Commission recommended approval?
Correct, with these conditions.
Can you tell me the last year they recommended a denial?
Two thousand thirteen.
Okay. All right.
I have a question.
Ms. Grant, are you next? Okay, both of them.
It was me.
Okay. They were both on, actually.
Mr. Patton, would you define for council what a conservation development is, please?
Conservation subdivision is a type of development that reduces lot sizes, preserves natural open areas, preserves streams, wetlands, steep slope areas as a part of the overall development within those common open space areas.
Will they be clearcutting the subdivision?
I doubt it seriously. They probably will clear for the streets and the lots. But the forty-six percent that they have shown on their site plan as common open space would not be logged or cleared.
Thank you. My other question is a statement and a question. The minimum house size, square footage is going to be sixteen hundred square feet. That's quite a small home. Will this be a starter community? Or what is the quality that they're proposing to be built? Is it downsizing for seniors? Will it be more of a, tell me what type of community they're proposing?
They are proposing to have this as an active adult. There will be three different price points of the houses, and I can get those exact price points for the three different square footages of the homes for you for the next meeting.
So it is an active adult community?
That is what they have indicated in verbal discussions with staff, and I believe that they also indicated that at the Planning Commission meeting.
That there will be children there as well?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Wilson?
Everybody's about answered all my questions. Have a couple of others. I believe that when I was at, I took notes in the Planning Commission, but I wasn't sure if they were right, and I want to be sure. I believe that the utility infrastructure, Dave, was okay. And if there was a gravity flow sewer, that there would be, the developer would make the upgrades to the pump station?
It's, while he's coming up, is my understanding that if there were requirements needed for that pump station, the developer would have to make those improvements for this development. The applicant at the Planning Commission meeting indicated that they were probably looking at going the other route with that type of grinder pump system that Great Sky has because they felt there was probably an issue with the neasement for the gravity line. But Dave can-
There is no gravity sewer in that area.
Yeah, that's what I heard. But if it had to be gravity, that they would upgrade the pump station. The developer would do that.
They'll have to do that anyway. Ultimately, all the Great Sky flow goes to the Great Sky Lift Station, and we'd look at that as well.
Okay. Thanks. The other question, did, did we have a traffic study in our packet from this development? I didn't see one. Could that, could we also ask for a traffic study to be submitted to us?
If you want to table this in two weeks for the applicant to provide that traffic study, you could do that. That would be up to City Council. The Planning Commission did not ask to table it or ask for a traffic study.
But we can-
Well, yes, you can ask for one, but final decision, I think you would have to table it until that's submitted. Does it take longer to do the study than when the next meeting is? As busy as all the engineering firms are these days, they're about a month to six weeks out on regular engineering work.
We already have a traffic study for the other applicant earlier today.
That is correct.
Same, I mean, it's basically the same space. I'm not sure how much difference it would make. We'll probably just steal that from them. I'm sure they wouldn't mind. We'll make a copy, what the heck.
The traffic study submitted by the other applicant pretty much came from the entrance to Laurel Canyon and Great Sky South, right?
Correct.
Not north of, not north of that.
They did not consider the development, this development in that last traffic study? I, it's kind of an impression they did.
No.
Okay. Just the impact of their development then?
Correct.
And nothing else?
Correct.
Might be a good starting point, though. Certainly can't be that far off. Thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mayor, if this is going to be mostly an active adult community, these people will be nearing the senior exemption age. Would you remind council what the seniors are entitled to?
Senior homestead exemption is an exemption of a, what amounts to a fair market value of two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That was passed as a referendum in the city, I believe in the late nineties, ninety-eight or ninety-nine or something like that. I believe it's a hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars on the forty percent level where credited against the assessed value of your, of your home where you live. So it's, it's pretty substantial. If your property, if your home is worth more than two eighty, then you just pay on the difference between the two eighty and whatever the assessors with the county value your home at.
That brought up one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
Was the minimum value that's proposed for these homes, three hundred thousand dollars? And it was to go up from there?
I think that the smaller square footage homes were under three hundred thousand. Based on my recollection, there was a little bit of discussion at the Planning Commission as I indicated for councillor McGrew. I'll get those price points for those different square footages and lot sizes from the applicant. I'll provide that to City Council as soon as I get that information.
Okay, good, good. Mr. Russ?
To answer Ms. McGrew's question a little further, I think there's the Cherokee County exemption for schools for residents over sixty-two is pretty substantial. And that's an absolute, once you're at sixty-two, you don't pay school tax anymore. And the second thing is we've got a little discount for seniors for garbage. And is there, is there a third one, Jean, I think?
Garbage discount? What else?
City, city taxes reduced?
No, no, no. Well, you get the exemption, that's a homestead exemption and then used garbage rate.
And then you get an exemption for the county for school tax.
It's a pretty good deal, actually.
Yeah. They pay you to live here.
Well, not quite, but-
Close. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Consideration and action on resolution of application for the Georgia Downtown Renaissance Partnership, Renaissance Strategic Vision and Planning Program. Mr. Peppers?
It's a long acronym. Council had asked that we look into possible programs for some master planning, visioning, strategic planning in the, what I'll consider to be the southern side of downtown. And so this process came to us in early November. And so what I would be suggesting to council tonight is to approve the resolution of support, which is in your packet. The application for this program is due on December first. It's a program between the Carl Vinson Institute of Government at the University of Georgia, the Georgia Municipal Association, Georgia Cities Foundation, by which they bring together a collaboration of students, design students, and technical experts to come in and help with some strategic visioning. What we've discussed at the staff level is that we would look at an area between I-575 and Marietta Road along the Hickory Flat Highway, to also include areas south of the four-way, which is at East Marietta and Railroad Street, to the bridge on Marietta Road at the bypass, and over to the river, just so that we could consider that area for transportation projects, recreation projects, beautification projects, gateway projects coming into town, maybe look at, at design standards and things like that. The program from the state basically lists a guideline of what the cost could be. The cost that they say is kind of the maximum cost is sixty-five thousand dollars. And then they contribute towards that with, with some funds and in-kind assistance. The Downtown Development Authority, in their meeting earlier this week, approved providing at least ten thousand dollars towards that, should we be awarded that. And so what we would do is we would, based on what's actually studied in the, in the plan, we would apply the correct funding source. So it could be hotel taxes, could be rental car taxes, could be splotched if there's- could be splotched if there's transportation or recreation involved. But what we would do is we would ask council to consider approving that resolution tonight, just to apply for the program. And then, of course, we would be in the application process at that point. Our finance policy allows for applications for grants. But this is kind of an unbudgeted thing, because we didn't plan for it in the hotel taxes at the time, so.
Ms. Gooden?
I had a question on the area. Once again, did you say it's... Does it go up to South Canton or no? It just stops before it gets there?
So basically, it would go from where the bypass goes underneath Marietta Road at that bridge,
Yeah, around Williamson.
north to the four-way stop, and then from the interstate to the river. Now, we may come in with a smaller area, but that would be the area that we would propose to review as part of that plan. So basically, we're tacking on to the master plan that was just done by the LCI.
Okay, thank you.
It sort of leaves that from the bridge up to Canton Motor Sales area at the Marietta Highway out, doesn't it?
Yes. I think that's probably going to be a little bit more than we could bite off with a plan.
Okay, so you would be including all of Harmon Field area, the... What else would be?
Areas around McLean Street, Carter'sville Street.
Marietta Circle or whatever that...
Marietta Circle would be in there. Everything along Marietta Road. It would include the area where the old McFarlands is at. It would include... Basically, what I expect is for them to focus on that central corridor and maybe have some design standards or suggestions along those side streets, but not necessarily get into the individual housing on the side streets and things like that.
Okay, now, where does it go? If you're going up Marietta Highway, Marietta Road, does it go to the left? Does it go on the other side of five, back that way? Is it a circle, or is it just goes up to the overpass there and goes to the right if you're going up?
It would just be the landmass that's between the bypass and north. It wouldn't go south on the bypass. It would stop at the bridge on Marietta Road as a southern boundary. I don't see us going very far on either side of that boundary.
I guess my question is, is it on the... Also included on the west side of Marietta Highway up to the bridge would be, right?
Yes.
On the east side. I'm sorry, east side.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
That would be the area that we would kind of draw off on the map to submit as part of the project.
Yeah, okay.
It would come from where the bridge is, the bypass bridge is, down to McFarlands or past McFarlands?
It'd go up to the four-way.
To the four-way stop.
Marietta and Railroad Street.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Grant?
Does it include Exit fourteen Hickory Flat Highway from five-seventy-five to...
Exit sixteen, yes, Hickory Flat.
Gateway?
Yes, that corridor.
Great.
A motion to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. McGrew, seconded motion. What is... What is the... Is the LCI grant involved here at all?
No.
Through the ARC, is there a reason we wouldn't try to get that money as well?
I think timing is probably the bigger issue with that. This particular project is to be... The applicants will be approved, and the project will be completed starting in 2018. So they'll commence the project starting in 2018. The ARC funding cycle is off from that, so you're looking at next summer and into next fall to apply.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
Just one. One more question? Chance, we couldn't... We may not get the... And if we didn't, we could move on to LCI. And conversely, if we do get the grant for this area, do we go in South Canton and go ahead and begin the process for the LCI for that part?
Sure.
That'd be a good idea.
And how much of the portion of this would the city be in, have to match?
I think if I looked at the numbers right, it was... They estimated the cost at about sixty-five thousand dollars. GMA, Georgia Cities Foundation, was going to put nine thousand into it. The DDA was going to put ten thousand into it. So that puts you forty... Forty-six thousand dollars roughly.
And how much would this grant be for? We don't know, or what?
Well, the grant is for up to nine thousand dollars cash towards the project. And then we get discounted services for Carl Vinson to come in and do the actual study, design, and things like that.
Oh, okay, okay. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you. Mr. Peppers?
We have three items tonight. First is a reminder that the Cherokee County Legislative Delegation meeting is Friday, December the eighth. We have received an email from the delegation asking if we would like to meet with them. If you would like to meet with them, let me know. And let me know what topics you might want to cover with the delegation.
I would like to propose that we meet with them to discuss Highway one-forty. We've all talked about that. We need to talk to our legislators about that, about Highway one-forty, and see if they can get behind GDOT and help us get that forty-year window reduced. So I propose that we meet with them and let them know some of the issues that we have in that area with traffic.
Ms. McGrew?
Where would this meeting take place?
It's at the lower level of the Chamber of Commerce building.
They wouldn't consider coming here and us taking them in a van to see the project?
No.
Okay.
December the eighth, so Friday. Anyone else? We don't have a time yet. We will submit to them what we need, what we want to talk about. They're working on the schedule. They'll let us know the time that they've given us.
Let's make it early if we can. You know, that's got to set up for that wine walk and all that, you know. Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be good.
The second item I had for you, you should have a copy up there at your seat. We had received a request from Summer Walk, the HOA, asking if the city would consider giving them the ability to plant some landscaping materials along their entrance to the neighborhood, which is in the area of Sunset Street and Heard Road. Currently, that's part of our right-of-way, because basically all that's there is right-of-way. And the city attorney and I talked about it. And we could do that through an encroachment agreement. There's a draft of what that agreement might look like. But basically, what we would do is we would provide the ability for the HOA to install landscape in that area. We would approve the landscape design. They would maintain that stretch of right-of-way. And we would be able to, you know, if bushes got out of control or what have you, we would be able to notify them of that. They would correct it. Or if it became an issue, we could take it all out. But basically, they want to beautify that particular section coming into their neighborhood, and it's our right-of-way on either side.
I think it's really a good idea there. And well, they would maintain it. The only question I would have is if we have to do utility relocation or road widening or anything, do we have to pay for that?
No.
Okay.
No, they are...
That would be at their expense.
It's at their expense. It's also noted in there that if they need to... They need to put in irrigation, for instance, for the landscape they put in. They would put the meter on their property and then run the line on to the right-of-way. But they would be responsible for all that expense. And if it had to go, it had to go.
There's no hardscaping. It's like...
No.
Entrance-type thing or anything like that?
No, there's no monument signs involved. It's just landscape. The only condition that I thought about after we looked at the agreement is to make sure that it's worded in there that, you know, if they do provide irrigation, they don't get any special consideration as it relates to droughts and things like that. They have to follow whatever the outdoor watering processes are of the city, even if it is on our right-of-way.
Anyone have any comments on that? Okay, this can... This will hold over until the next meeting for a vote, right?
It... No, actually, we'll place it on the agenda with a copy of their landscape plan for December for the work session to discuss.
December work session and then vote.
And a vote in December, yes.
Twenty, okay.
But I didn't want to make them go to the expense of a landscape plan if it wasn't something you were willing to do. The last item I have, it's come to our attention that the Unified Development Code, as it appears on MUNICODE, has not been formally updated on their site since August of 2014. There have been amendments, and this update should have occurred after each of the amendments. These amendments were submitted to the city clerk's office, and the steward's working to compile those amendments now. As you know, we had put together a Unified Development Committee to review certain things on the UDC code over the last year or so. Before we submit those amendments to be compiled into MUNICODE, I was going to suggest that perhaps that committee get back together to review those items that are on the table and bring back a recommendation to council, so that we can update all of that at one time, as opposed to sending in multiple updates to get us back into the date restrictions. And that is all that I have.
Okay.
Now, since I came on the council, Ms. McGrew and I have been discussing the need for sidewalks and improvements in the city right-of-way along Highway one-forty. How do we go about getting that done?
We would have to draw up any plans within our right-of-way and submit them to GDOT for approval. If you recall, when there was initial discussion about the project with the apartments on one-forty, GDOT would not allow the sidewalk within the right-of-way. So in that instance, if the city was going to put in sidewalks along the stretches that we do control, we would have to get easements from the private property owners to be able to put those sidewalks in. Now, what I have done is I have reached out to GDOT to ask them if they would consider participating with us in some type of study or corridor in that area, and did receive favorable response from the district's assistant engineer.
So if you had a favorable response from them already, what is the next step?
Well, I think part of it is figuring out exactly what their plans are long-term in that corridor. And if they're going to require us to put the sidewalks off the right-of-way, we would have to determine the locations that those sidewalks could be placed, who the property owners are, and we would have to meet with those individual property owners to discuss easements.
I know it's... I know it sounds like a very tall order, but this is something I think we really need to seriously consider.
Sure.
We've heard a lot of talk even tonight about that. And for the year and a half or almost two years that I've been on the council, this is one of the areas that we've discussed. And I know that we've used splotched funds to upgrade our roads. And I wonder if we can't do, you know, take those next steps. Maybe there's just one or two at the time, but let's don't abandon it. Let's continue to work actively.
The bottom line is, the city should never approve a project for development, ever, that doesn't include sidewalks. And we've got a perfect example in Riverstone, where we've got a wonderful shopping center over there, and there's not a single sidewalk on Riverstone Boulevard. So, you know, we're going to have to make up for some of the sins of the city in the past. The difficulty is, in those areas where you don't have development, it will be to the full expense and burden of the city. Not saying it can't be done. But when you take into consideration the right-of-way that the state has on one-forty and the topography on either side of that road in certain areas, it will be an extensive project. What I would suggest is, if we are going to go that route, we do need a partnership with the county, because it's not going to make any sense to have a sidewalk for thirty feet on this side of the road and then no sidewalk for a hundred-and-twenty feet, and then another piece for thirty feet. It's just not going to work.
So do you think that's the next step, that we look to try to negotiate a partnership with the county?
I think the next step is to put together a corridor study that would include sidewalks. And perhaps we can bring the county and GDOT to the table for the discussion of that at that point.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. It would be very important to me to get the sidewalk done. And I wonder if we can call it a trail and that way apply for recreational grants to get it done and incorporate the hospital, get the hospital interested in it for the health of the community. They might have a little interest in it. Not a whole lot. I'm sure they're tapped, just like everyone else is. But I know there are grants out there for recreation, for trails. And if we tackled it as a trail, we might have some money available to us.
Sure, absolutely.
And if we went all the way to Waleska eventually, Ms. Roberts has... Ms. Jones has expressed interest in meeting up and Waleska joining it. Reinhardt students could bike all the way to Canton and enjoy our downtown and our restaurants and theater, and then bike back. I think it would be a benefit to the whole county.
Mr. Russ?
Ms. McGrew might have something there, because one of the concerns I would have is certainly to come ten feet off the shoulder of that road. Topography is terrible, and you really have to flip-flop from one side to the other to make it work. In some places, there's just no room to put a sidewalk in. And guess what? If you're arguing for widening the road, you're going to tear up the sidewalks. I mean, sidewalks have got to... The first thing that's going to go when they widen the road. So you've got a real temporary... Hopefully, a temporary fix. A trail might really work if it was, you know, it's not as expensive. It might be able to be incorporated into topography that's not so cool for a sidewalk. But that might be the real best approach to try to solve the problem and have a walking trail for people to go from Laurel Canyon all the way into town, because they're doing it now, and they're just taking their life in their hands.
You're going to have some critical pinch areas. You're going to have a hard time crossing over where Shoal Creek, Old Shoal Creek bends back.
It's a problem.
And I think you're really going to have an issue with GDOT on trying to cross the road anywhere with a pedestrian.
If you could make it one side all the way in a trail, I think it might work. Just might. It's got a better chance than a sidewalk, I think. Thank you.
I think we need to be looking at the total city as far as being a walkable city. We've got streets all over this city, downtown and otherwise, that don't have sidewalks. And it is amazing how many people are walking on the side of those streets as well. I realize it's not as, you know, speed is not generally like it is on one-forty. But still, I've been really amazed at, just in the last few years, as Canton Market Place has opened up, how many people walk from way down in Oak Ridge Estates and up to the... to either shop or work there at the shopping center. I'm not sure what all, but walking along the side of that road and no sidewalks at all. I mean, I think we really need a comprehensive plan for making the city a walkable city, not just the one-forty. We need to look at this whole thing, actually.
So one of the things that we do have going for us now, if you recall when we contracted with the IMS to come in and do the study of our roadways and road surfaces, that study also included an inventory of everything in our right-of-way. So they have the full listing of locations of all of our sidewalks, gaps between sidewalks, conditions of sidewalks. We're working with InterDev, who's helping us out with our IT services and GIS, to take all of that data and get it mapped, so that we can look specifically on the map on those places where if we put two-hundred thousand dollars of splotched money in year one, say, into sidewalks, where can we get our best thing for our buck by connecting existing sidewalks where there's already a gap located? So that's what we're working on from that comprehensive standpoint. It does not take into consideration State Highway one-forty, because that's not a road that the city maintains.
Anyone else? Oh, Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. I apologize if I'm putting you on the spot, but I sent you an email, excuse me, recently about a pipe sticking up out of the sidewalk in front of the fire station on North Street and crumbled sidewalk at the water authority on North Street. And I have concerns about that, because we're having the wine walk coming up, and it's going to get dark around five-thirty or six o'clock. And the wine walk is from five to eight. Is there any way that we could get this sidewalk fixed in three weeks?
Public Works is working on it. I don't know if we'll get it done in three weeks, because it's based on the contractor actually getting out and pouring the concrete. But it is on their... It is on their agenda to try to get done by that date.
Thank you so much.
Okay, anyone else? That's all you have?
That's it.
Okay. I have a couple items I wanted to mention, and... Oh, yeah, I've got to go back to this. I skipped a bell here for some reason. Discussion... this, I skipped bill here for some reason, discussion of the two thousand and eighteen council retreat. Mr. Grant?
Thank you. I just wanted to kind of suggest and, and that we start thinking about our retreat and, and propose that we see if we could move it up and possibly look at the end of January. Couple of reasons, I know we have, we're kind of, one new councilman coming on, but also, I, I think last year, it was March, may have been beginning of April when we had it, and then by the time we got our goals published and agreed to, it was, I think, June or July, and so, I know our goal as a retreat is to kind of publish yearly goals and to, you know, to then the next retreat, see how we did, so I thought if we could, you know, maybe shoot for the end of January, and I think, I know we had some issues, at least, I think at least one council member that couldn't make it, but if we could go ahead and get it on the schedule and, and find a date that we could all do it, and get it published out there, I would just, I think that would be a good idea, if we could do that, so.
Mr. Peppers, you going to work on that?
Already in conversations with our facilitator.
Thank you. Okay, we finally got that one, didn't we, finally? On the mayor's report, I wanted to, to mention again the discrepancies in, in some of the city, sit, some of our citizens' water rates, and understand why some pay twenty percent more than, than others in, on water, and as much as fifty-five percent more on sewer than other citizens. The reason is, is because some are really being served and billed by Cherokee County Water and Sewer Authority, and the, and others are being billed by the city of Canton. Now, to me, there's an inherent discrep, unfairness here about that, when you've got citizens in Canton, one paying one water rate, like in the, 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 city is like eleven-twenty for up to two thousand gallons, the minimum bill, eleven-twenty per, per thousand. The county water and sewer rate is thirteen-twenty-nine, I think, it's, it's two dollars and nine cents per thousand, I'm sorry, I got that reversed. Hours is, is eleven-twenty, and, no, that's right, the county is, is, is higher than we are, or they're lower, which one are they, they lower, aren't they? County is lower, yes, than we are. We're thirteen-twenty-nine, they are eleven-twenty, two dollars and nine cents. So, and we've got quite a, quite a number of people that are paying the higher rate, and it, it seems like an inherent unfairness to me, and I would, would like to appoint a committee, and I would like to ask Mr. Yawn, Ms. Wilson, and Mr. Russ, if they would meet and, and serve on a committee to look at these, to see if there is, from the standpoint of fairness, is this fair to our residents? If it's unfair, what would be a resolution to this? How would we, we solve this? Or, is it, it is what it is, and leave it alone? I mean, whatever, whatever they decide, I'd like them to come back with a recommendation on that, because I think it's, I think it's sort of that important, because when you charge some citizens one rate, and, and even though it's another entity, the citis, other citizens are being charged another rate, it's, it's just unsympa, to me.
Could, could I make a comment here? We've got two holidays coming up, and I've got.
You got to do it quick.
Wow. I've got to have it done in thirty days, so I, I'd have to ask the other members of the committee if they're good for that, because I can do it, but.
I, I can't imagine it taking long, look at it and, and see what it is, and.
We can try, sure.
Look, that's all I ask.
Joe Allen, are you, you good with it? And Ferris, are you okay with it? Okay.
I would only ask that Mr. Patton and Mr. Peppers pull all the information together, and have it ready for us to hit the ground.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, thank you, okay.
It's pretty simple to.
We'll do that.
Water rates, well, that's it.
Well, we just kind of need to know the geography.
Oh, tomorrow morning, at seven AM. No, I, no, no, I mean.
The, thank you, the, the next item I want to mention is, as, as we are concentrating on looking at perhaps some development along the river here near downtown, I think it's important that we do everything that we can as development occurs, and it's going to be very, very attractive for development, and when you have a, a walk or trail along a, along the river. I think it's very important that we look at asking the, maybe the ARC, or hopefully to, to assist us with a river, Edgewater River Protection Act. And what that basically would do, there is a Chattahoochee River Protection Act already, and has been in place for many years, but what it does, it adds another layer of oversight for any development that occurs within so many, so many hundred feet or whatever of, of the river, and it protects it from soil erosion and different things, so that it, that fortunate resource that we have is not damaged in the future. I think that's a, a very important, it adds a layer so that it doesn't stop development, but it, it has a different level, an additional level of review of that to make sure that it's, it's going to protect that resource. So, I'm hoping that we can look at that, I want you to be thinking about that. The, the next item we have is, that I have, is I have, we had a vacancy on our Planning and Zoning Commission, and I wanted to nominate, and I would like to go ahead and get approval from the council tonight on this, so this person can hit the ground running with their first meeting in December, which happens to occur prior to our council meeting in December, a couple of days before, I think it's the fifth, and we meet on the seventh, so I want to nominate Mickey Farley to, to serve on that planning board. And that will be my nomination. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? All members voting for her, thank you. She has graciously accepted to, to do that. The other item, I think, has probably been discussed, I had on here the state route one forty traffic study, the corridor study and possible moratorium, but I think that one's been, been dealt with tonight, so that's all I have, so I will introduce, I mean, entertain, I got something else? What did I have? No, 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 I didn't say now, did I? That's, all I need is a, a motion to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. We have a motion by Mr. Russ, a second by Mr. Goodwin, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Okay, we will not be coming back out before any particular action.